Okay, just stay in the chair if you're watching, say hello in the chair so I know who are watching. And if you have any question, I'd like. Hello Charlie, welcome, welcome. Glad to have you here. So if you are new here, you don't know we do these streams every week. Um um for the bootcamp and in general to have questions regarding anything. So you, if you have any question, you can ask as well. So, welcome. Let's start with things. The very first thing I wanted to talk about before we jump into our continuation of the sea. Blender four point five. It's released and I was really excited about it. There are so many new. Pieces are there. I was really excited about this game also which is also. Available now. So if you want to see they have made this game. So you can go check it out and we can check it out as well. So. Let's see if we open up in the steam and then we can play. And this. One comes in with a lot of update around uh so many different things. But we are mainly interested in modeler uh modeling and other features. And the most importantly. Welcome. Yeah, so uh if we go, if I show, I've installed it. So I will. I will load in the. Blender four point five, I just installed the fresh, I was running. Alpha otherwise, so we have this and then we go to preferences and. And here. In display graphic, we select Wukong. And they say it is much much faster than and I watched some of the videos like. Twice as fast to three to four times fast and they have new Boolean systems, new geometry nodes and there are a lot of new stuff. But mainly, we're gonna test the performance, which they are talking about here, like there is like new improvement. So there are. You know, bunch of. Um. Stuff, okay? So here. This is Blender four point five. Uh put it here and let me fire up four point four also. So we're gonna share. So this is four point four and there is four point five and this one don't have Wukong. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna fire up our both of our charge scenes and we're gonna see how. Optimal it is. Okay. And let's see how many people, uh Charlie, yes. Yeah, you're welcome. Uh every week we do live stream and I share my work progresses only. So this is your space. So you can learn my process while watching these live streams. Just keep an eye on the server or or the YouTube channel where you're watching, be subscribed and and every week we do live stream. We'll continue with our scene which you're working from few weeks now. So we'll share soon. So now um I would just quickly. Open up the. My church scene, uh church file from here. So it's a six. Six, seven, eight, nine. Twelve. As you see, it's a really heavy theme and I want to see how. Long it takes to open up in four point four and how long it takes in four point five. So we will have the comparison for both of them. So it roughly took forty seconds to open up this file, so we're gonna open this as well. So see. And charge six. So it's been twenty five seconds. So let's see. This is, I don't know, there is more settings we have to turn on, but it's almost. Gonna be same. It's almost the same time it took to open the file here as well. And. It might be, uh there are other things, but they say like the mesh. functionalities are much faster in this. So I will. The mesh operations basically. So what I'm gonna do. I will move. Duplicate this. So. I will see if the mesh operation, they say like we can handle minimums and polygons in there. Um we'll see. So maybe I will just continue with this. One, we'll see how the performance is really not light. So that's why I wanted to convert this modular one we've made. And we have mirror and we have decimate here. So we remove the decimate. And. Where is the? And we're gonna just check, it's it's. It's really heavy. Because there is a lot of modifiers are going on right now. Yes, so this was not. Duplicated. And on this, I'm gonna apply all of the things. So we have dense geometry. So they said like we will have much better. You know, control over geometry and vertex and in added sculpting and other things. There's like bunch of operation, that's why it's heavy, like I'm definitely sure. So what it? So now we have and I'm gonna remove decimate and same thing apply here. So now we have. Both side uh same. Model, as you see, the faces count as same. So I'll first go in edit mode in this. So just to check how. How the performance is with all the. Let's see, this is, like, like, we'll just test the same thing. If it's the same, then. This is same thing. To me, it seems the same. More laggy in here. Yes. I don't know, do we have to change something in here like? Definitely this. There is nothing else. Yep, we just have to change to Wukong here and that's it. The system and we have anything else in which the share in here. And also this like when we get to material, so we'll see, we'll see how it goes. So for now, I'm gonna turn this off. And we're gonna jump back into our thing. So as you know, we had these modular pieces which we were using to create our. Advancement, uh which I can show here. So we have our church here. So we we exported a fully single mesh church for now. So I thought like we will, I will show this one also and also the modular pieces we made. But it's, it will be super heavy and it's every time takes a lot of time to export. Which is not optimal. And and for these styles and everything also, it's not uh right way to. You know, put the mesh all. Nenite will not like it, these all tiny meshes. Uh Nenite likes uh one singular mesh for. Basically all of it. So if it's gonna be like hundreds of tiny meshes, Nenite uh. Don't like it much, basically. Uh so the number of, if if it has one single geometry, even if you watch their demo, if you have one single plane. With so many millions of count. And you have another mesh which have thousands of geometries but millions of counts. The single geometry is much more preferable than uh this thing. So if we can see. Nanite visualization. So in here, you will see here. You see, all these tiny faces are separate geometries. Like here you see it's a thing. But if it's gonna be a single geometry, if it's gonna be like this uh thing, you will see it like this. The desolation, right? So. It have to do it for all these tiny meshes, which is kind of counterintuitive for it. And also like when when you go further from the thing, it increase the size of the nanite. Or triangle. So that happens more smoothly than uh on smaller thing. That's why trees and leaves and everything are a bit chunkier in there. So as much I could understood from the technical demo, so that's what I'm saying. Okay, so let's continue with this thing. So we already have uh. Bunch of mesh here. So I will just add polygon as these are instance of these. So we are. Just. You know. And I'm adding segments so we can, you know. What does blend them later on? There's nothing in here, I think. So it automatically updates on uh other faces. That's the the same thing here. I think here we don't have uh. Anything to take it. So what I'm gonna do. Simply gonna do it using. Knife tool. Then it's it's doing on top of that also. That's I'm seeing for the first time. So what we can do, we can. So. We can. Subdivide these multiple time, we got the vertex and then we can join them. So I think there is something wrong here. Okay, so these are not joined. So we can join them first. Now we can simply. Create this. And if this is not right. We can select. This vertex. Join. These vertices. And now let's see if we can do. Something like that. So. And we say subdivide. Simply, I'm adding more polygon basically, that's what I'm doing here. Nothing much. So you can, you'll see it update the count on all the meshes we have used. So what what my plan is to basically bring all these. And for now, uh to make things faster. So we had two, one is the larger one, one is the smaller one. So I'll take one mesh for these, both of these. And one smaller and one larger one and we keep them there to export. And we have bunch of roof pieces which later on we discarded. So I will hide bunch of stuff. We're gonna apply. Export and we'll try to recreate recreate this whole structure inside Unreal. And we have done it before, uh but we exported the whole mesh. We're gonna do both of the things. We ex- make a whole charge single mesh. And one with the modular one also. So let's do that. Because there is a bunch of modify, that's why it's taking time. Maybe you could apply it, I should have applied it and then. Then. Simply. Let's just. Bring them here. This one, let's turn on decimate. And mirror we don't need. Also this, now we have two pieces, one is like small and one is large, I think these are fine. We don't need more than that. So uh it's it's on the other way, you can take uh, you can make the whole structure and then you can break it apart also. I would apply all for the sake of performance. And if you, if you're not sure how we made this, you can watch our previous streams. Uh I'm still doc- trying to document it better and timestamp the stream so and. Still hoping to make the document uh where we have, you know. All this isn't there because in stream we discuss other things also. So we take the timestamps from there and we say, okay, we discussed this, this, this. So we, you know, we basically have a whole document of the process. So that will also be there. So while it's there, let's check if someone is here. Hello Zina, welcome back. Glad to have you here. So anyone who is watching, please say hello in the chat so I know who all are watching and we are continue to have our fun. Okay, so this is taking time. Some reason, it's not that heavy. Yeah, nice. So this is uh basically you see a two meter and this is uh we have. We apply rotation and this one is on four meter. This is six meter. We can make more if we want to, but this I think for now is okay. And this one is uh we need to apply rotation, we cannot because this is. For now, is the, these are instance pieces. So it will cause problem if we. Apply this now. So. What I have to do. We can actually. Um. You know. Apply the settings means the. Uh apply the transform and object, so we can make them unique one or I can just simply have a duplicate. And simply can keep it here. So now we have uh these pieces which we can use and the only thing uh we need is this. And there was another script I made um. I need to check if I can uh do it or not. Let's test it out. So add on, it's all from disk. Uh it's not here, let me check. It was a simple script I made using uh. Our. It is, or did I move everything to? Let me check. Wait, it's mine. So if I search. So there is a. Exporter, okay. So what what this does. Is uh. If you remember long time back, we did this uh. Uh live stream based on uh how to make custom tools for Blender and Unreal Engine, right? And I we use some, uh we looked at Max scripts and I really love this script which basically takes uh, you select some. Things in the scene and you copy. Yeah. In in three D Max and then you take it to Unreal and you paste it in the scene. It basically, you know. Take it based on that. Uh I I'm still trying to figure out this, but let's test this out. Like if I just copy this thing. Yeah, and we have this and I will file save current as uh. Save. So let's see if uh it have uh. Something in there. So we create a new basic level. And we paste it in here. We see something happened here. Yeah, you see something happen, something came in the scene. So there is something in the scene, but that is not visible right now because uh it does not exist in here. So how that works basically? I thought uh I created um basically these. You know, you have these church modules, yeah. So if I show based on uh. Wait, I will show you. If I create a new scene, yeah. And we we still have exporter, okay. So we let's create a cube. Yeah, and I will duplicate it. And we do it. Maybe already. I'll do bunch of cubes basically. Just to test it out, like if it works or not with this. When I tested, it 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 worked. So we, you can randomize transform. In here we can, you know this. Okay, randomize. And even. Yeah, so we have bunch of cube. And in here, we can say, okay. And if I come to my. Unreal, in content browser, in content, I say. Wow, see. And here. Let's see if it. And we say convert to static mesh. After. Where did the convert to? Not transform. No, where is the convert to static mesh? Wait. We can go to. Modeling and we can simply. I think we can do it from here. Mm 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 mm, create, let's create cube. And accept it. And can we do this to this one? And we come to content and we. We don't have to. Can we just drag and drop here? Why there is no convert to? I think we had to convert to. Mesh should be here somewhere. But like this, it's used to be here, why they moved it? I don't understand. There used to be convert to static mesh. And how could I just search here? Create. And it, just give me a second guys. Mesh. You guys know, just simply. They used to be simply. Convert to mesh basically. Why it don't? There is replace, but what if I want to convert it? It is there. But where it is? Oh, here. So I will call it cube. This is the prompt. Uh basically, the the first one is this one. So I selected lastly, last, at last, you select which is the. Basic, the instance of it. Imagine you have uh. Susan, which is, which could be anywhere. So if this is the main thing, you select that at last. And I will simply select and gonna select this one. And then you. Just put everything inside a new collection scene. So this. Collection should match basically with Unreal Engine's. Content browser. Basically how I try to make this tool is basically. This scene collection is the content browser, this content folder of Unreal Engine. So inside we have scene collection and inside we can have another. Okay. And yeah, so that how basically is there. I believe like if we. I'll test like, I don't know, like if we, if all the other cubes are outside it, will this work? I don't know. But we can just copy to clipboard. And then come here and we say paste. You see something? We have all the objects placed according to in the scene in here and they are all. Setting meshes. Okay, and they all are linked to. This cube and they are instances. They are not uh objects, but they are instances of this cube. Now let's go crazy, okay? As I said, like, I don't know if this works, so I'm gonna deselect Suzanne. And I'm gonna put into another scene called, maybe we keep this in. Scene and we put this. Uh new collection, we call it prop. Yeah. And we call this one test. So now what we're gonna do, we're gonna put scene inside here. And prop here and we select our Suzanne. We go to our Unreal exporter and we can export it inside. So basically this, uh what what I want to do is basically you select, you you project and you use the Unreal's own script. To directly transfer the model without creating a base. For our, for now, it's not working. That part is not working here. But I'm working on it. So you link and object data now everything is monkey. Okay, and now we select this one and we can export it to for now anywhere. And now I'm gonna put here only, okay, we call it Susan. Just make sure it match the. The name of your prop, but if you're using unreal exporter, it's gonna do it anyway, yeah. So I'm gonna export that B X. Now as per our thing, so we have, I will rename this one to test. Inside, I'm gonna make a new folder. What did I create? Okay. Why like here? Something is wrong. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Now uh we call a prop. And in here we're gonna import our Suzanne. Hmm, import. Simply. We have our Suzanne in test prop, okay? It gonna matter and let me clean up the scene. For now, we'd have bunch of them static mesh and other one prop and to see why that is the case. So right now we don't have any mesh in here. In in here we have bunch of props, so we're gonna select all of them. We select all the meshes, in the last we have selected our. Main thing, okay, and then we say copy to clipboard and we welcome to Unreal scene and we paste. Yeah, and let me see if there if it exported the, it did not export the parent. So that the parent model in the center, it did not export that. And all the static meshes are here in the scene, they all have all the transform properties and the scale and everything. And they are all linked to. The instance of Susan. Isn't it awesome? So I'm trying to basically if we can uh so basically this kind of like a bridge between Blender and Unreal. But you have to copy paste, but this can be automat- this can be automatic. Basically, we can, we just need to write that XML file or a JSON file. Which Unreal plugin can read uh if we have it, so this will be, you know, super busy. Yeah, so this is like one plugin I've I made and this is what we can use to transfer our thing also or we can recreate basically. This one will quickly show you that this has been sitting here, wanted to show you guys for a long time. But it 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 works basically, like if you have all the modular stuff exported and then you based on that. It is still do it for now, it do not recognize all of the parent thing because you can only select one parent in Blender, but. The possibility is there, right? So you can uh so so what happens in behind the scene, I can show you. Uh yes, let me open up the notepad. And wonderful, not bad, it's not opening. So if I show you, come on. Here, if I paste here, you see, there is our code, uh it's called S key code. So if you see bigger actor, it's just actor and it just have a name. And then it's object, it given name, static mesh object component this. But we can, you know, give it the same name, for some reason code is not doing proper job in there. So we say, okay, this object should be this name and you do this. And here in game test props then is the parent. And what this is the transform property end of the object and close it. It's just like HTML, but you there are like bunch of these code. So how I know basically whenever you uh imagine you are in Unreal. And you select these thing and you copy them. You copy them, okay, you come to your node and when you paste it, you do the same thing. Okay, so it gives you this code. Okay, begin object and begin actor. So do the same thing, so basically that gave me the idea like, okay, this is just a bunch of lines of code. So if I make a script which give me the same code based on the selection of the object. And this uh this path is based on the collection in in Blender and which is a parent object. And that can be changed, no? So that can be anything, there could be so many things which could be based on that. And then there are transfer properties, but this is what Unreal is and that's what my script is doing. I can share my script to my GitHub, you can grab it from there. I wanted to incorporate it to my tools which are on GitHub. Uh but they're not updated, so don't grab it them for now, right? So here you can go to. To my GitHub profile. Okay, so there are like these uh this is realized instances which is my old script. Uh which solved two things uh in the Jmenter node issues. Instance and you can replace all the instances with certain object. Which is sorted now, they said in the recent uh four point five update, they said they fixed these both of the issues. Instance issue was fixed before and also, so the script is not needed anymore, but. People still download it and use it, which is nice, yeah. And other than this, I have these T three D tools, okay, and in this I I'm I will update. So I haven't updated my last thing also, so I'll be updating here so you can check it out. So yeah, so that was like fun update, let's check what people are saying. Um. Hussein said, hello Hussain, is there a document with your process will be awesome, I think it will take a. It's definitely, that's why I'm I'm not able to make it because uh I was making the first document based on my YouTube channel. If I show you, I have like five step process on my YouTube channel, uh there's a video. If I show you here, so I made a video a few weeks ago. Five step process, okay? So this is the the video, basically, so. And I I I wanted to make a document but still taking time. So I'm still in progress with that document and I will share it uh first. Then I will use that document as a base and then we're gonna continue our bootcamp uh in there. Okay, so to document it takes a lot of time and that's why I'm requesting everyone who is watching to timestamp the videos. Uh because that will help me a lot, so I know what video uh have what what portion in there. I have this thing, so I will directly add it in my Notion page and then I can share the Notion page in one go. It's gonna take a few weeks still and but thank you very much for understanding. And OJ go awesome, welcome, welcome, I'm glad to have you here. And your nice tip in putting between bladder, yes, that's basically a pain point basically I'm working on. And script is uh just plug yeah, I made it, but I will give half of the credit. To the A I tools, basically all the. This the M S code have here inbuilt. Uh it's not like cursor, but it's on chat board which was paid before, but it's free. Uh it's enough uh for some experiment. So I I know basically of course you do things and if you're stuck somewhere, you don't know what to do when there is error. You just tell it, it just fix it for you, so that's much more awesome. So I would say uh let's get back to our scene. Without any. For a two, we can try this out in there, but it it is definitely not ready. But we can, I believe, uh. You know. Do that with. It takes time to open the thing, so this will be lighter now in there. She is so much for work, I will see what setting I need to change, it should work. And it's not that heavy scene, but. Will improve a lot because once we have uh remove all that. Basically, because each piece now we have a one piece which with the. A lot of modifiers, it putting uh subdivision, then displacement, then optimizing it and we have instances of it. So when you move one thing, it, you know, the result. Ah it's supposed to take forty seconds, so now we have here back. So I will turn off Wi-Fi maybe, so now we have uh you see we we have different scale here. But it's okay, but we can we can uh fix this individually later on. Okay, so we have our two walls and we have these pieces. Now the only pieces we need are these roof pieces. Yeah, uh let me see if, yeah, we have this thing, so we can uh for now I'll remove these. Uh geometry node from here. And even uh I would say I will remove mirror also, we don't need. And this piece, this piece, I think these four pieces we need, I think rest of them are duplicating. And this is like there's uh one small nice trick, if you have modifiers. If you have some modifiers and you want to remove all of them. You select all the objects and select the one which don't have any modifier, then you link, copy modifier, it basically remove it. Uh rather than going and start deleting, yeah, and now you can basically. I will not instance it, so I will just duplicate and. Move it here, let's see if I if I can just answer it also. Um oh. Here. This is the inner piece. So basically we can keep them as is, because when when we gonna export. Uh them, we anyway gonna export them by select all of them. And that's another thing, when you all click on something and put some value, it add to all the selected objects. It it works on throughout the blender anywhere, you can do that. Now we just simply. Somehow it's not aligning for some reason, it's the exact values, but why it is not aligning? Maybe I made it longer. Maybe it's supposed to be like that, but it's weird. Okay, so these are the four pieces and basically because if we need to make the front one and we can just duplicate this piece. So we have a basic pieces which we used and this top roof was unique. And this cross was also unique, so I will basically just add it to our. Corn object. Enjoy it or maybe we can keep it separated because crosses at other places also. And this this is what we need. And I'll bring it here, this door piece and the. Indefinitely, and we already have this, this is from, I think this is the piece, this one. And we need this one. And the roof cross. If uh the pillar, yeah, the pillar will be duplicated on all the places. We just need one or we can have more if we want to. And we can keep all these. For now, the the pivot is here, which is, I know, is uh not optimal. Let me bring back. All these in a row. It's not a biggie because we can fix this, this like pivot is here and for this because we have mirrored it, I think it's mirrored based on this door. And so we should apply all, or it's not a unique object, so I will. Yeah, so this is the roof, these are. This is one object and there is this pillar. And. Let's make it zero. So we have uh everything with the fifty, the multiplication of fifty and this is the cross and the pivot. Keep here, now this will be floating, but it's totally fine. Okay, so we have this piece, now we just simply first let's export all these. And then we we need more, we will export all the pieces which are missing, okay? This one is this one, yeah, this one good, let's move it back. Now we have all these pieces, nothing we need more for now, so select all these. Now we have all these here and we say, okay, put them into. Church modules basically, yeah, and move these from. Yeah, so because I want to don't want to have them here now. This is, these are all the pieces, basically we just need to. Make sure we rename and we decided to keep this by meters. Just like one point five meter by three meter here. And we decided to keep it other way around, so I will make it one A. So if this is a. Two A or two B also, it could be. But there are, if there are more. This is wall and there is this window, so window have one A is here, so I will rename this one as one A. And this is. And this one is uh. I believe this, it's not three by, but it's like two. So we can just say six. X six by two, I believe. X comes first, so three by two. And one of the piece and these are like the. Are these roofs, the roof, do we call them roof? So there are the first, uh there is edge. Or we can call them straight also. And this is basically three meter. And I believe uh it's better to keep it straight and then rotate it later on. But it's a unique object, it's not a unique object, so it might cause trouble. Why is leak, oh, this is not straight, that's why, yeah. But will it be trouble making it? Straight. Okay, so now. I wanted to keep it straight only, so. Now we can call it church roof. Um this is three meter and we. I does not matter in this, so we say three. Roof. Side, let's call it side. And three meter. One A. The side and this one is uh one point five, let's apply rotation. And now. This is one point five. Now this is corner, so we call it. And this one is one point five, so. Corner. In. So let's call it in one A. And this is out, means like outside, the convex world. Uh concave also we can say. And this is also name and which this is, this is. Crop. Cross. Yeah, I'm gonna take one of the dragon also. So this is the dragon, so we basically name it. Based on this, or we call it rather than prop also, we can also call it decor also. Because this is the decoration of the. Church, so we call it. That and we move it to. Deco drag. Yeah, and this are. So this is also roof piece. And this is actually. That these are the unique, basically. And if I apply everything, this is like six meter in X. And so we call it big. So roof. Unique. Six meter. And this one is three meter. Because it's go by the unit only, so that the we have three meter unit, so that's going by that only. So if you're wondering what's happening, so we have uh window. And now the same thing we go to here, it's already named, and this one is pillar. I will do it going with the. Wall only, so wall. Pillar. And it's three meter. Yes, uh. What is this, okay, this is the. Roof. What should we call it? Cool, yes, I don't know what should we call it. And this is the large one, so. Call it ten meters or eight meters, that's making nine meter. As by the three, it's supposed to be, uh because we not slightly did that, so it's almost. So we have all the PCs renamed. We're supposed to send them in the separate. Uh structured folders, but for now we just keep it as is. And for uh for the fun, we can select this one. And it's a link, uh copy modifiers, so we keep the roof tiles in there. Just so we can. And for this, I'll delete the base on the side. Now we have. And if you need here and we can, you know, duplicate this one. It is not snapping. It's weird. Something happened. See in the chat if you can still hear me, say hello in the chat, so I know. Okay, so otherwise, uh we'll just kind of, okay, I'll get it, thank you very much. Let's uh I think something happened. Okay, so now we have all the pieces here which we use to make the whole structure, this one. Are we gonna do the same thing with this? And actually we can uh copy paste this, uh like I showed with the plugin, but plugin is not ready for this thing, but I can. To uh basically how, but first we need to define where we want, so where is our to the church. And we can say art, environment. And we say church, I'll make a new folder, church. Okay, so all the modules will keep in here. Okay, so I will. Copy this. Okay. And this scene one I have said uh in the. Church we already have, so it might cause problems. Well, this is church. And let's create new. So many. Let's create from here. And this, let's call it. Environment. And. Here we can create scene. To the church. Select it. Art. And then environment. And inside we need church. So exactly the same uh as per our. Unreal, so now we can select all of these. Which are unique. And we say okay, export. Using, we're gonna export using our unreal, uh we need to. And it's a it's a good habit to maintain our folder structure similar way, so just give me. So in church. Basically we can say okay, to the church, it should be the name to the church and then we. Inside we create the similar folder and. We say art. Environment. Church, yeah, so here we export our meshes. And it's gonna put SM automatically, but uh the tool will not work. Because uh. It will not match with the thing, so I will skip the SM for now. It, so otherwise it gonna might cause the problems. And use again select recursive and we need to do other things. Move to zero, that's the one thing we need to and selected and there's eight meshes and we need to. Hmm save it. Export. Hmm it can export all the meshes into our folder here. It taking time, well. I don't know, why is that? With the roof is not an issue, um no issue actually. It's really light, for some reason it's taking time, let's open up our. Oh, I I was planning to do behind the scene, but then I thought, okay. Hmm I will make these fixes and record maybe the video, but everything uh in the scene like we have to do one by one. One did one time we just focus on the river and the stone bed side of thing, one time we're gonna just focus on the bridge. And like that, so we go step by step basically in there. Why they not export for some? That's weird. Could not take that long. There is no heavy mesh, all the modifiers are applied and everything. That's weird. Okay, so uh this is the. Also we'll wait for it, so the for the. The texture pipeline, there are like two texture pipelines I wanted to uh talk about. How can I end up in this one? Yeah, so there are like two texture pipelines, uh basically uh we wanted to talk about. Basically one is uh your. Same, you have mesh and you vertex blend, it's good for our uh mesh because it's modular stuff. And we can just paint some details and dirt and everything on top of it are. Top of our uh structure. And it's it works with the modular stuff well. And we have other one which is a little bit uh technical, but I really wanted to show you guys, so just if you give me a second. I will show you, there's a really nice uh polygon link and my good friend Shubham have made that. Uh concept, not just concept, but he made this. Uh document on a poly count. I have it open. So just give me a second, I will check on the wiki. Now when you need it, never. Yep, found it. So. Here. So this is uh. From Shubham, okay, so. Basically, yeah, so it's it's the same texture, basically you can use the same workflow, so like you have, you can have prints. Basically for all the different areas, this are really detailed assets which you've made. So these are the trims. And shown some stuff, but actually these are the parts. Which are combined to make the stuff and then can combine to make more, and the roof are like a bit separate thing. But most of the things, even the wooden planks, because the wooden planks have mesh and mesh, you can. Um you know, take them up and down and just walk and then the roof is separate asset. That also you can map it on top here, right, so in the strips uh in here. And you see this uh and these, all these assets, they both use uh same texture. So this possibility is limitless, you can do uh so many other uh props with the same texture. Now this is the one thing which comes in advance, you have all the mesh made basically. Okay, so you create another UV set, uh you uh you have one with the trims, you create another UV set. Where you pack everything into zero to one space. And then you create a low resolution dirt masks. Uh this could be uh dirt, uh this could be moss, this could be damages, this could be just variation. So you have another texture which is masks, so you can use all the four channels for. Obviously R G B A, so you can use all these four over the different it is. Is the, this is a shader, so you see there's the UV two. Um I think there's like hmm A O and uh moss and dirt A M D. This is I believe, right? And this is the. Moss texture to, you know, put on top and dirt is basically you can change the color, here the dirt color and you can, you know. Still uh control the how much you want all the different masks to be. And this is the main U V one channel thing and then you can say okay use, so this became a master material which we can make also. And then uh here's a showcasing some of the other stuff. But yeah, so this was uh basically a really nice uh. Breakdown, I really loved it because it goes into so much detail. And even this thing which can be, you know, baked in A O and other stuff, it can go, yeah. So yeah, so I think he have uh removed his portfolio, yeah, he started putting again now. But uh yeah, before he he just, you know, restarted posting uh his work here. Yeah, give him a follow if he love his work, but this one is a really detailed breakdown, and yeah. So this is something similar we can do in our church, but for modular modular thing, uh it can work. But we are, you know, placing the modular stuff inside Unreal. First we have to export it, then it it reduce the purpose of the modular stuff. That's why we don't uh do it, so that's why I'm saying I'm exporting all the modular stuff here. And I will export another mesh which will be just uh simply the whole church. Without any modular stuff, that will be much much easier, I will show you uh uh because we have already made the modular stuff. And we just trace the thing and we're gonna make our life easier. And we gonna, then we gonna use the same thing, uh the box map uh to map the UV, then put the textures and then, you know, all the same things. So now, uh I think we forgot to bring stairs, so did we? What? This is definitely something wrong. Hmm, let me fire up. Blend again. I'm not sure why it. So I'm opening the other side. So that is there. So let's test out in uh. Blender if you can, I I will show you how you can do it. Just like imagine you have uh. Basically a plane. This is imagine a modular piece. I'm waiting for it to open, if it opens then I will show you in the actual file. So if this is a modular piece and you can do it in any and in Max, I think it is a bit tricky. But anywhere else it's uh it's okay. Okay, so we have our file, we can reopen and all everything we are actually glad we saved before export. And why it is not? So I will. This. This is uh. Piggy's. Oh, this uh. Because the mirror modifier was hidden but not the. Top was just applied, so this mirror we have to remove first. So this is not there, this is simple mesh, uh okay, this simple is bevel only. Nothing complicated for all these. And understand why it is. Is it because of this, this? Is it because of this this we removed it. Imagine we select and we sell link copy modifiers and we can simply. And we remove this. Now these are all. This one don't have anything. Just bevel. Just bevel nothing why let's go by one by one. SOLID five level smooth angle. I don't know I don't know. Okay did it finally. Church ah okay 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 something is there we. Did not account for it exported. Why the A one is selected why this exported. Selected this one. Close this one okay. Now uh we have everything here I would delete this file we don't need and we have rest of them and we get them to. Unreal uh window content browser. Uh just. Church. We make sure to do no search for texture or material we don't import this and we combine meshes. Combine static meshes and we have do we have import all. Yep uh it exported with the. The mirror modifier so we need to export these uh corner roof uh roof parts. These these four so I will simply port only selected. Let's see it's a five assets selected we did not select five assets. Why selecting the. The other part that's why it's. I understand. That's a weird bug okay let's alt P yes now. I think those were like we because we duplicated from there there were already the child of it that's why. So let's see this time it should be quick. I don't understand why it taking. This much time to. So but we can start building our thing and if you uh. In in the normal scene we can test out uh the thing okay so if we want to I will create a new level. Because we already have the church window and everything. Now uh if you want to. Ah I really don't know. Why it is taking so long. Okay exported select the these four. Good finally and now uh these are not linked currently uh and. These have okay we did not close the transform also I think. Right so imagine like we have these uh two windows so we can select. This and in the end we select this yeah and we can copy yeah. And it copied the six items from where I don't know. Could be four only but it's okay and then we if we paste in here just to test because we are not gonna do this. No no sorry uh we go to our plugin is not in there. Uh we turn it on. And we say copy. And we test just to try paste. It it works but the the thing this is what I said because uh. It's rotated in this and this have rotation value. So it's not supposed to work properly because it did not start in that sense. But it works I'm glad that this Adam works in that sense but it's not uh that optimal. Now there is another way uh I think we need to make a level blueprint. Okay so what we can do. We start clean uh in a clean file we start with it and we start with the same. I will open this up in uh. So basically what we can do we can select all of them. Yes select all of them whichever we feel unnecessary. Imagine these all we want to place in there. Let's remove this and keep all the other ones. Imagine we want to utilize it so what I'm saying is so you say copy to clipboard so now you have all the actors. It's still not the best way I'm saying it so you paste it in that now you got it but you don't know which piece is which. So for for the start you can take the static mesh. Uh you can as assign any so I will take the wall and I put so you see you got some abomination. I I told you like this will not work perfectly but you got something in there. So you roughly know what is where but the problem here is because everything is rotated now because of our. Thing and this we should have taken care of before and only. And which is. These are all singular things so we need to apply rotation. So they had don't have any rotation value or any scale value they should not have any. Let's just double check. Yes see is there is a rotation value and it's also not uh. So you cannot apply without. This is also negative and this is also the thing that you should be rather place it uh. Straight to the surface or should we place it like that um it's also a question. So it's also have a scale value so make sure we don't have all this and it the plugin will confuse now. Because imagine if we want to attach these again so I will select this. Select this one and as a link uh object data you see. It rotated now uh you can uh you can uh rotate it back. Uh on the individual. Now if you export and now try to do it it might work now. Because this rotation don't uh this these pieces don't have any rotation now so we need to export them once again. Let's check this one see this have rotation and scale. This don't have yeah so the most of the species see this also have angle. Station pillar don't have so good let's select all of them again. And export once again. Let's save it. As you say like if you want to utilize this features now if I can select this one select this I'll link object data you see. This go preserve. Uh and I don't know why this should not have any. Here so I can say alt R this bit select this one link object data. Alt R. And similarly we need to you know do with all the things which we have placed like for these walls. And I think we have placed this wall also this also will be linked to this so link object data. And we select these two alt R. Rotate Z ninety. Just kind of fix whether it's we have to do it and I think these all walls are simply. Like these are the single window again we can select this link object data select this two. Rotate. Now we have to fix it manually there is no other way for these. But at least now these will work at least if I want to bring them back now don't ask me save it. So this is our mistake we did not do it like we should have just moved to Unreal and made this in Unreal but I tried to show you inside the. Blender how it will look in the start. To let me export so we don't have any again trouble with this. Okay let's see if someone have any question or let's see how many people we are here still. Let it export. Okay so we have four people good. Okay see thank you very much for being here you are the number one today. Did you export no it's still going on. So waiting for this to export and then we can simply continue okay wonderful. If you have any question regarding this are we gonna sort this out you can ask okay. Uh now um we have all the assets in there I will save and I will once again. Uh we have here. Again if you uh if you are uh considering to put S M in these names. Uh I would say we have to put S M directly in the name rather than uh. Uh in uh doing it on that sport uh I I'm really um admire this one but I believe we have. And there's another thing rather than having you know the whole mesh as the name you create empty. Inside uh like this is an empty so you create this empty. Uh with the name of the offset and then you put all the meshes inside it so when you will export these empty all the meshes will exported automatically. So that is the key basically so. Yeah so we have all them saved so now just to show you uh the same thing again. So I think uh we can uh select uh. Um linked object data so now it selected all the object which have the same link data. Okay now we have this is the parent only and we have let's we copy we come here we say. Paste we got the walls. And similarly we can keep doing this thing but once you have all and everything linked select this wall so you can do the same. Select and link and it's shifted so it makes our life easier. And you copy. Come here paste. Okay so the one thing is did we. Rotated opposite. Since fine only here. Is it because of the access issue. That's weird because this is these are inwards all the assets are going inwards for some reason. Hmm is it because of the access issue maybe maybe it could be the asset uh you know plugin issue also so. We can't totally relate on it but the the one. Thing will be this one. Yeah so all the pillars are selected yeah and we say. Look at that. I don't even know. If it's accurate or not. But somehow. What I'm feeling. Because this is the front. Right it's just totally mirrored. So on this side I I think this is the access issue because X is on this direction here. Here X is on this direction. But I think it's the access issue hmm I need to sort that out definitely okay. But whatever so so we can simply ignore this one and we can simply start with. That also. And now you will see uh the fun part of why we named them like this and why it is it matters. Uh this floor is uh make sure that zero. And I will start with this and this one piece which was remaining with this. And we come here decimate everything we apply. We start with the door of the church and then we gonna move forward with the same. Okay I'll see. Here. And we can. Put it into church art environment just. And here uh we can name it. Stairs. And good. And I'll make sure there is no rotation or scale that's good and we simply. Let's wait for this to export. Now we know because uh that's why I kept the plane in there so now this is at zero in the Z but we keep. Uh right now it's going anywhere so what we need to do is to turn on the snapping. Yeah so I tried to because we have uh one fifty and three hundred so we need fifty snap. So this will work with that. I will move it uh or you can keep it here also like this is the entrance of the church. So that could be the zero zero from here the stairs also can uh basically. Take it takes time for some reason. Okay so stairs are here. Let's bring them in. Here. Okay so that's what we have to see. And this one is uh the pivot is here which is not correct let me get back here. Abzad. Abzad. Negative okay because we made it underneath uh also so that's why there so but we can. But now we have origin. Here. And I'll see. Now we need to export again. Now it's at the float level because when I placed it it should basically sit on the ground level. Which we did not do where we needed to. So it's gonna take time so let's just let it happen. So now now when it will come it will you know sit right in here. And we're gonna re- re-import it from here give me some second. And we uh take this one and we you can alt click to duplicate and rotation. We don't have any less so for now we. Go with ninety degree or you can go with forty five degree also like if we uh make your. Make you more but I would say like we for now we go with ninety degree. Yeah uh snap let's make it slow and now we just simply. You know put it here take this one here we already have. And it's exported save the file re-import see. So this is what we need and we can move it uh so it's really going through the wall which is what we needed. And yeah so that's basically uh um good for I think we select this one. And. For this side because we are making both side here we don't have any mirror or anything and we have our door. We put in here then we can. The door and then we had the pillar. And then we have a roof three meter long. It's origin also we should have. Add in the. It but you see this uh with the snapping it's well that's what the modularity is about like this help really helps you. Once you have the unit incorrect usually like with the four meter two meter is the best way but it's uh sometimes no need to. And. And we can you know uh keep. Uh this has a reference also I'm gonna take a screenshot of this. And I'm gonna bring into the pure graph is not open it should be open now. Uh open. We have it here. Now uh we can simply uh why this. What happened. What happened what broke. In the key got stuck so now we uh simply. Go by the wall basically so we have this wall in here so I place everything in in here first then. And when you you know move it around it should match technically. And we have. It is. Duplicate this one and. On the other way so we don't. Have to see us ninety. It's gonna be all the corners are filled. Okay so this is here and the same we select the pillar and we move it here. And now I'll show you the one thing. Because we have uh decided to con- put the naming one A now you see. It's three by two one A A two eight five so it's like the same mesh. So when we if we want to select something it's gonna be there. If you have put the number later on it would have jumbled with the other meshes with the one A two. A one A two so it would have jumbled so this really helps uh with the proper good naming specifically. And I think this one was a bit longer here this one have a smaller. So I'm gonna make it ninety again. Move here so it seems like this one is six meter so let's remove this one and. Bring in our. Six meter wall. Spirit could have been in the center of it that would have been better but it's totally fine. And this seems fine and then we have this single one. Okay though I mistaken for something I think. This was for. The previous one so I'll select these. Of here. And if you have any question you can ask in here related to this. And why it is working like this how why it is not breaking apart. Yeah so I will happy to answer it. So there is this and then. I believe we can. Move it here. And you can you know alt rotate also and it will duplicate basically. Now uh from here I believe we should bring the roof and this one was six meters so. Yeah so we can make it more thicker also but this one is not sitting. Perfectly. So we we can break the law a little bit here also to you know to give it support. We can. Move the wall also. And then we simply. Continue to. No and I will just add a roof. And then I will show you how we can bring this because this is what we are doing in here right now. But we can bring this whole set uh we don't need to do it again and again. Uh imagine uh we have modular set and there are some buildings which we. Create for simple because they are like multiple stave churches right you saw. What if we want to create a different version of a church or a different shape from the same modular set. So that's we are not gonna just keep copy pasting right so that's where the blueprints come in which I will show uh now. So we have this and. This is the corner piece. It's basically. Should sit here. Fine okay and there is this. Corner one which sit here. And also here. And then we have. This one and we have smaller one. Should have brought in without these. No scales would have been easy to. The most trade. Perfect. Yeah so these roof pieces are here now it's just matter of you know duplicating things around and I will just. Bring it here. Here and then I will duplicate it once more now we select all these. Let's see if we can. Yeah so we have our thing and the the upper one were like the like this these walls only. And and it was just sitting on top like so basically on here and then we just move it. Behind. And just keep watching over the transform this this really matters because uh on based on the values. Like the four fifty match mo- make more sense because uh it's multiple of one fifty. And it should match with the the corner of the thing. So. That's why that's why I said like I wish I had uh brought you without the scale so then the simplified mesh would have. Been able to justify it more. Let me just quickly bring in here. So now here from here onwards we have the windows start. And as I said before uh we can. I just. If we can uh keep the corner wall same as this one. I will tell you why just in a minute. And take this pillar. Because we can select these roof both of them together. And even for the instance or matter of fact you can duplicate the top one also but you can select these two. You can duplicate them together but it's not that um big of a deal because anyway we can do it. Yeah and you do this and then you select this again and you can place it on the other side. And for the the pillar if you want to fill in you can fill in or you can just put it in the corner only. And the same thing goes here we selected we move the wall here. The roof piece uh this one. Comes here. And it. Fill in for that corner piece okay I see when now we starting to get this. So now this uh uh thing uh we have for now all the meshes here. You select all of them you right click and you say move to create new folder. In here also you create the same uh type of structure but you say church one A. So we know where all the things are. Now I can select the church. When when I can file save as. And I can. Save it in here we can say church. One A. Yeah go to the church. And okay so this is where we are keeping just the church again so we are not losing our thing. So now uh you select all the meshes. Okay so I think you can create a uh blueprint where it is. From here. Here or I could be wrong so I will first let me. Save it as so if I break it then. We have something to go back to why it is jumping back there. So now we can go here. Uh this level blueprint. If I select all of them. Create. Convert selection to blueprint class and. This level blueprint. Uh is it. Is it this one I'm not sure like this uh might be. Let's just try. And so the where I want to save it here we can. So it create this. Basic blueprint mesh basically you can select and you know still do the same operations here I can select it and. Uh you know duplicate things here or. And save let's see or it should be if if I'm uh. There was edit button here if it's not then I have done something wrong. So basically you should get a button to edit blueprint here. If we we should get so maybe if it's I'm not doing wrong I would just check it and show you next time uh in there. So seriously like you get this now I can place this basically if I let me save this one for now. And if I come to my this here and. Did my content rather go here so here we have blueprint and we can just bring it in in this. So wherever we want to place it and we can just keep editing this blueprint and it will automatically work basically. So. Let me just bring in. Exactly. Right so simply like this one blueprint rather than have placing all the static meshes in there. This is like much uh better way to um. I can go to edit and you know change things here. But I remember this is not the correct way so it used to be level blueprint because. I can uh you know duplicate and then move it around. So like imagine I feel okay this is here and. And then you can see here it's updating in there so you can say compile save and close it. Is there but this is not you can do it in the viewport also for some reason I'm not seeing it here. Uh it should be in the viewport in the viewport you open it and you can edit it in there. And then you when you close it you can save it and simply get done with it. Okay so this is uh I will basically maybe I will do it on my own I will just continue with it. And we already been on to our marks so we will do it. Uh next session I will keep it ready all the meshes and I will show you in there. Uh Hosine asked can you give more detail uh in rear production how the work will be divided for this type of. So asset. Or uh if we get this type of asset. Um then it starts with the same thing. So you uh let me open up the your left. And we'll talk there. For for example like any any type of study given if we look at the God of War thing here right. You see like in here here they have used bunch of these uh meshes. So now as a uh surely for the. Junior artist might not get to create the whole set of model thing but imagine you decide to work on this. Yeah and and you say like okay I want to create these houses. Okay so there is this one this one and there are like multiple different ones right. And you say like I want to create this using a modular kit. Uh you see there are a bunch of things are there now. You have to see the repetition like what repetition like we were what we did we saw the same window type of things are there. Now you see this door is here it's also here it's also here. This door is here same same this whole wall same same. Okay, this whole back wall is the same it could be on the other side and in the middle it's the same. Then go for the roof piece. From here it start to repeat from here like this tiny portion is repeating. Okay or you can make two pieces one piece without this pattern one with this wooden pattern so like you have two roof pieces. So like this please come here and then other piece or you can keep from here corner to here. So the other one is is hidden so it's basically corner to corner if it's not exact unit. And then uh. You define all these pieces uh same goes for the base and the base could be like longer these logs could be longer. They are just underneath the surface so. Like that you define all the pieces and then you create try to create those uh things. Uh like see this door is same here and here you have a different detail so you try to find out what different details you can use. So like this whole piece you can use here and then you add a door to it and door mesh here and the same is here. Okay and the side log piece same here so basically you have similar type of things you see. You reuse it and try to replicate. This is a real piece you see and they don't have uh more uh modular pieces in there but we can. Check it out, okay. Hmm where is our. And we just put. Okay so now see here we have uh the modular kits. Which is used to create basically most of the most of the things. So now there are like way more but like this is the stage we are at. So we created this one so this one have this this stone base. And then there is some wooden log which have a different texture and then there is this tileable texture which is on the plane basically I believe. Uh if there is a geometry could be there could be a geometry and see through. This visible here you can see through this one and there is blue. So all these pieces are making most of the stuff in there and then there is other stuff but for this. We have the outside one there is this one this conversion of this and. Um and yeah so this is the basically uh the the breakdown of that. But if you really want to know like how that that works we can you know break down this uh. Of this environment also in here the concept art. Basically we can break down the concept and we try to replicate this building itself we just focus on this okay and if you. Crazy we can make this one the whole thing and it's just then because like we have in here uh with the Stave churches as I said. We have one version and we can uh I can try to showcase like how we can create the other version of the churches also. But other churches might have some certain details or certain uh type of things like we have seen in there already. The side, yeah. Like some have this wooden right some have the straight woods some have the scales. And some different type of skills but. It is possible so if we if we decide to make other type of. Stave church we just need to make few more modules that wall with just the scales. Okay, uh the roof with the different textures so like uh most of them have these dragon scales on them. So which is good for us we can replicate some of them but you see in the bottom we don't have scales in here so we need a. Variation where we have scale maybe a pillar with the scales. Yeah then we have a straight pillars and here also we don't have anything. So all these are different modules basically all these three meter meshes these walls we need to make we just replace it and this won't. We don't need to create the whole thing and then we can replicate this uh these sketches are nice. Now these all look the same so we can utilize the same uh modules and we can try to replicate these designs in our. Uh on our set okay so this is what we can try to do. Uh I will show you also if you need to know. Uh I would really be be interested to to see how they are assembled all this modular asset to make this environment. I think it's really similar to yes yes uh. It's exactly the same without pipeline we are following so so you have the really basic plane. Yeah uh like we made previously you need very basic plane basically all the sets should be done on the blockout level. And then we try to replicate all this thing firsthand if that blockout work or not. Yeah and I was kind of sure like this will work that's why I did not uh do it. But I kind of showed it in the blender like so we use the same pieces and this is how we can. Assemble everything like Lego pieces and create the whole church. So then we I uh we kind of exported the whole church which we shouldn't have I should have done. Right and then and there export all the individual walls. And then assemble it in Unreal which we are doing right now that's why I thought of okay. Um rather than uh dropping this idea because I dropped this idea it's like it will be much better. To showcase making the whole thing unique it will be much quicker but I thought like okay let's roll with it. We'll just do the vertice blend and everything but. We assemble everything in there. In the Unreal so yeah so this is uh here so we can create the same thing and I can show again. Uh we we gonna build some more uh pieces next session. And we finish our church and then we can assign our texture and we'll fix all the things which are needed in there. So we make our church inside there and then we you know step by step improve the details and other things which we were doing. Uh similarly uh gonna do again okay. So it's totally the model once you have the modular set uh it's literally like playing with Lego so you can. Please and you know play with the different design and stuff like that and once we have built one church. We don't need to remake it because we can just duplicate the blueprint we have the whole set uh already ready like similarly. Uh in in Blender you just duplicate everything and then just make changes. So you we can make changes like move the tower to the side or maybe make uh the round back or flat back stuff like that. Okay. But for that we need a specific pieces so that we can create we you can either create a slide arch. Uh shape a three meter piece and then you know bring it here and then just play with it. Yeah that also we can do so it's 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 definitely a lot of stuff. Uh I will continue with this on the next session maybe I will do in the meanwhile I will do all the. Back end thing which we we are still remaining to fix. Basically this mountain we need to blend and this trees and all the foliage we need to fix. And yeah and basically polish the terrain little bit more. And then we just no then once we have finished the church we move to bridge and the river. Yeah bridge again a bridge is more simpler it's not that complicated again because for the design. The wall will be stone again I can go with this the current one only so I'm really uh liking it for now. There is this seams and everything which we can fix simply by. Listen I said nicely okay but this is how it will mainly be. Yeah uh here we can create singular stones and put the different textures. And then we can blend like we have blend already like with some wetness in there it's ugly. Yeah but uh we definitely need to make the river and I recently saw I think it was uh. Trending in here. Let me see. This is not in ornament where is it. Recently saw like there is bunch of uh. River ones there oh look at that. They are really crazy ones even like do we have in. God of War. That's cool war stuff. Just for inspiration. I believe uh they have this. This level in board so we can see how they have placed around the water this is the concept arts I think. But I will I will look at the game plan we'll see how it look near the river. I don't think there is uh much game boy but you see like that. Oh love it. These are also concept art so in there but basically I want to have uh wait I have I think I have in my collections. I show you. Hmm and the likes are here. Yeah this one. Hmm and this one was good too. I kept it for the same uh. Really like. So here is the is is giant lake. It's it works for my previous one also to polish it to. The things so you see here in the bridge here also they have the breakdown for the things with the bridge. So basically you have a tileby texture in there with the blending and then you have the stones around. It's like all sculpted but that's crazy. And this. Even even if you have these bunch of rocks you can rotate around a place and then kind of bend it that will also work. So now and this one was. For the path and everything if we want to yeah it's not needed. Yeah here is another one. Some water body. And stuff. Yeah but but overall they see the the mountain on the back and the stuff like that so basically you can feel in there. There is. Yeah it's simply like the simple composition thing like coming from dark to bright. Then you see the house in the in there which is more lit than other places simple thing. Yeah so this is as our inspiration basically so definitely because this is in our concept art this is what the. The main thing is we are deviating basically I just wanted to replicate this one but our riverbed have details. The rocks and everything I don't have uh trouble because I can you can definitely do the moss and everything. Maybe we need to create a base. There's moss and then we can put more moss in the on the. On the bridge also. But overall it's really calm and simple but we can have fun. But I'm I'm really uh what I'm uh really thinking about this water. It's really running water right I'm just thinking like how I was going to make this do I need to make mesh. Uh which is going around the rocks and to show this flowiness of and the form. Do we need to do that or uh. Imperative we have some dynamic stuff. But I believe what we can do in in there like once you have all the rocks and everything available we can you know project the mesh. On top of it and then we can know. We can we can basically I believe we have to work really uh closely because we can show uh. Running water that is not an issue we can make the flow but the only thing is uh. The smoothness in this form definitely need to see how I'm gonna do that. For this. And for for reference if I need to look at references or if idea I I will we go to pixels dot com. Yeah it's uh free enough I say uh river with the stones. Okay imagine uh we search this you get something and then there is a video. And in the V D U uh we can look at something similar if you find. Like this one. So. For inspiration like how it looks the water fall down and how it comes. And where the form it makes so that we might make it dynamic or we might uh you know. So this is the much more calmer. Like for example this one. Okay so and the how it's going around it and that's uh. Old bridge on river. Let's see if we find something. So we find let's see if we have video. Small one we might not find exactly. I think the previous one was much better. And then you will find much more. You know. Suitable as you can relatable. You know references so basically if you need anything related to anything so basically if you have animating you see. Now you can see look at the water like how it looks. Yeah depending on how fast it is. So this is what I was planning to look at it's like how water flows and how it can go over things. But like it will be really challenging hard to create basically. Like nice to look at but it will be challenging like I'm not uh that technical with the shaders. I know the basics of how to get things done but yeah. We have references and I will see if I can get some support if I need it about that. This is like too big of a stream we don't need that big we need a smaller one. But yeah. Like that we can make something like this. Okay then there is a bridge going over it. Okay so yeah so that's um it is for today. And we already passed to our mark. So we uh just fun and I know we couldn't cover that much. But that concept it takes time to show up and we have we have a lot of to cover. But I hope you got the concept and next time uh once I have this thing maybe I will try to model it on the backend. Until we will fast forward I know I promise every time but I have a lot of other stuff so yeah. I hope you learned something new today I know today was jam packed with all the stuff. And as always like if someone can timestamp the video uh the stream I would really appreciate it. I'm planning to you know cut it cut some part and you know post as normal videos so we can do it like that also if we need it. Uh but I don't want to you know fill up the channel with a bunch of videos but. So timestamp so that's why timestamp and in the description is the best option. So yeah if someone can do it I would really appreciate it. But keep up the good work well next time is the feedback so I will post the link for the feedback next time so next session we're gonna look at. Your environments and other stuff so keep working on your environments posting updates in there. If you have any questions and any feedbacks keep them ready to be posted and we will look at them in the next session. So thank you very much for being here I really appreciate it and I will see you in the next one bye.